I want to call the May twentieth, twenty twenty four meeting of the City Council for the City of Lake City in order. Forever while the stamp from the pledge of allegiance for a national presentation to be given by South Carolina State Department.
I pray the leaders to divide the United States of America to the Republic which stands one nation under God and with the
Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to gather here today to represent the city of the business. We ask that you lead, guide, and direct us and shine a light of wisdom upon us. Also, we ask that you look out for our first responders and military serving at home and abroad. And as our citizens celebrate Memorial Day this weekend, we ask that they make safe and remember what the holiday is about. Ask all this refreshes to call me name.
Mr. Jordan again?
Present.
Mr. Howell?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Mr. Carter? Mayor Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. Martin?
Present.
Chief Butler?
Here.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, the Lake City Council has opened this public meeting since nineteen sixty-eight, the city codes had prohibited any persons from making personal or persons or slanderous remarks or becoming bogus tricks while aggressing the city council. Yelling or making audible comments without its constitution's protection. Such conduct will not be tolerated as under one approved manner of aggression by city council that has been recognized and beaten up. As reminded persons are not to openly carry a handgun or carry a concealed weapon or firearm while the government body is being aided by by these rules with the course of the thought when ever so to meet. Okay, now a proclamation, approval of the agenda.
So move it, say.
The motion is taken to approve the agenda on the favor of the uh, who? Okay, probably participation, we're just going to see tonight. Uh, Christina Stokes?
Hi. Hi. Um, well, thank you for having me. I'm here to speak because, um, well, I would like to do some internships um, here at the City of Lake City, Florida, to learn about law and local government and anything else that I could possibly learn about.
Mayor, can I?
Yeah.
Speak? Uh, yes ma'am, uh, I talked to her this, this past weekend, she was at an event that, uh, right out here at the, uh, at the Zibo right here, and, uh, she was interested in, uh, volunteering her time and services to learn about local government, especially, uh, the mayor and the councils. Uh, she is definitely, uh, inspirational and trying to, uh, volunteer her time and services and find out about local, state, and federal government. So, uh, if we can, uh, help her, uh, I was, I was gonna tell you to get with Ms. Arby Sykes, uh, she can, uh, probably, uh, direct you in the right direction. Of course, this is Ms. Young, uh, Mr. Carter, you know, and I, and, uh, and the mayor, of course. Uh, and, and this is our city attorney, uh, and she was a little bit nervous on speaking, so when she called me and, uh, she wanted to know what to say and what to do, uh, of course, I tried to direct her in the right direction. So, uh, uh, we glad to have you and we look forward to working with you where, whichever way we can, okay?
Thank you so much, sir.
And that's what we want. We want young people like yourself, uh, to get involved in local government, uh, and, and state and, you know, um, and whatever we can do to assist you, at, at least whatever I could do to assist you, I'll make sure that that gets done, okay?
Thank you so much.
And thank you for coming.
Question, Mayor, what is your name?
My name is Christina Michelle Stokes.
Christina, okay, great. I think that's awesome. We'll be glad to work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm very grateful for this opportunity, so thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Okay, this next one, I'm not sure, it's Ahma and it's S H, I don't wanna put you the last name. You can tell me what your pronoun is.
Hello, hello, council. Uh, my name is Ahava Shamajula, and I am a pastor here, just, uh, recently relocated here, and, uh, we have a ministry here, Outreach Center. Um, I'm presenting to the council today, we've just started a cupcake business. Uh, it is catered, uh, and it's catered to small gatherings, so, uh, minimum of ten and a max of two hundred. And also, the funds will be going towards, uh, the renovation and the building of the ministry. Uh, there are some things that we want, we want to provide to the city, um, outministering it with our outreach. Um, we've had opportunity to really meet a lot of the homeless, and a lot of them, um, are illiterate. So what we propose to present to the city through outreach, out, out, and to encounter Christ Outreach Center, um, is that, um, a program that we call Open Doors Literacy Bootcamp, where we cater to the homeless, um, and any adults that are illiterate. Um, a lot of the adults that it's, it's hard to find a job or even fill out a resume if you don't know how to read. So that is something that we want to bring to the table amongst some other things, as far as outreach for the community to add to and to build up the community, and so one of the sources to fund that is through Ahava's Heavenly Delights Cupcakes, where we cater to, uh, to small groups and, uh, individuals as the orders come.
Thank you. Mayor, may I say something here? It's terrible. Uh, this is, it's, um, this is another, uh, business, uh, coming from Jacksonville and, uh, providing services here, and of course, uh, the cupcakes that she sells, uh, is, they're, they're unbelievable. Uh, I think it's a one for three and two for five. I had a couple of those this past weekend, uh, as well, and they're very, very good. Uh, this is a, uh, a veteran that's coming to our town that, uh, wants to teach and help, uh, and also start up a business here in Lake City. Uh, so, um, we're just grateful to know that you came from whatever state or city you came from to come to Lake City. So if you would, just continue to reach out, uh, to our city manager, assistant city manager, whoever the case may be, uh, and then whatever we could do to assist you, and I'm glad that your business is expanding and you're raising money to, uh, to help, uh, the homeless, uh, uh, and others, uh, around our city. So I just want to let you know how much I appreciate that, okay?
I do have a question.
Sure.
Where, where are you located now, your ministry now?
Uh, it's located right off of, uh, Southeast Bay. Uh, do you know where the Country Club Plaza is?
No.
We're right inside of there, we're suite one oh three.
Okay, awesome. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. McNally, John Cole.
Good evening, thank you for letting me share. Um, my name is John Colby, Kids Feeding Kids. Uh, this afternoon, I sent Ms. Sykes an email earlier, and, uh, she was on a print, forwarded in regards to our plans in using the funding for our Kids Feeding Kids program, and our plan to feed the community, teach the kids how to grow their own, their own food, and to feed their own families with what they grow. The first one is the Ag Center of the papers I said, uh, I've told you about. Right now, we have limit, we are limited to what we can do because of the lack of land, funding, and, uh, to, to begin. Um, we are currently starting ag programs at two local private schools this year, and more eventually to come. Our plan for, uh, the use of the funding available to open our Ag Center and the shops. The plans for both are in your emails. For the Ag Center, you will see, um, our kids will be learning, what our kids will be learning and doing. They'll be growing food, um, after school classes, Saturday morning classes. Uh, the subjects they'll learn is landscaping plants, propagation, transplanting, hydroponics, and planting seeds. We'll also have a U-Picket farm, community gardens, and, uh, local banquets and events. The shops will be next door to the Ag Center. This is our plan to help people start businesses at low cost. And this, uh, the list on this is, uh, we'll have like fifteen to twenty shops, and they're just small, small buildings, they're little tiny buildings. Um, to help, uh, businesses start at low cost. Events for kids on Friday evenings, like, we'll have like Friday night, movie nights, game nights, uh, music, and different, uh, holiday events like trick or treating, Christmas, and Easter egg hunt. And this will teach the kids how to work in retail, plus, uh, they will be in charge of landscaping the whole area and keeping the upkeep, um, in the, on the land, uh, which will eventually turn into, uh, you know, future jobs in agriculture and landscaping, and much more. Um, what we're asking is if the C will allow us to use a portion of the hard funds to use for our goal and not only help kids learn new traits, but they will grow food for their families and to grow food for the community. They will also have a opportunity to have something for them to do on the weekends. There's a poss, there's a, um, overall consensus, consensus, that if you don't, uh, play sports, there's nothing for you here. This will give a lot of kids a chance to have a positive experience in life. We need the land, we need the small buildings, shown on your email, and one large building for the classrooms and for banquet hall, for the Ag Center. We have grown our ministry from helping just a couple of families three years ago to helping hundreds of families every month. If you have any more questions, please feel free to call or email us. We would love to meet with any of you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Bowden?
I'll pay it.
Uh, create, create and design.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Rachel, I am here representing a nonprofit youth organization called Hype. Hype Helping Young People Excel and Helping Youth Perform Effectively. We are a youth enlightenment organization, and we, um, we enlighten youth through sports, performing arts, mentorship, youth leadership development, personal development, and socioeconomic development. I have sent a proposal over to you all this af, this afternoon for your, for you to review. I would like to petition to get on the agenda for the next meeting, so that we could come with, um, a video showcasing who we are, what we, what we do. We've been in the community for about the last three weeks, canvassing the community, talking to parents, um, getting signatures, um, getting parents' input on the, what's in the city for the youth, and the majority of the families that I've personally talked to, um, are, they, they seem to be disappointed because there's not a lot of activity and enrichment programs or initiatives for youth in the community. I spoke with the director of the Richardson Community Center, went and spoke with him a few weeks ago. Um, he was happy to work with us. Um, we've talked about collaborating and doing a partnership, so that we can be a, you know, a benefit for the youth and the families in this community. So I'm here today to see, you know, what the policy and procedure is in order to get on the agenda for next, um, for the next city council meeting, and we are interested in coming to Lake City and creating greater expectancy in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Claire Mott, Driscoll?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members, and thank you to the citizens attending this evening. I am a new resident here. I, uh, in March moved here, um, from Pensacola. I purchased the Chalka Turner, uh, home in District Town, and thank you, Ms. Young, for representing our district. Um, this is a eighteen ninety-six historic home, and, um, March nineteenth, I submitted to, um, the Historical Preservation. I need a new roof. The house is leaking, um, significantly. And if you recall, I rained on Saturday, um, there is an existing metal roof that I'm asking to be replaced. Do you know what it sounds like when it's raining inside your home? It's tough, um, but with that being said, um, I was not able, um, with Mr. Angelo's help, and I will just give a shout out to Mr. Angelo. He is exceptional, kind, helpful, um, and you're lucky to have him. Um, he took me by the hand and told me everything I needed to do. However, we were not able to make the April meeting, um, for the Historical Preservation to go ahead and approve that new roof. And so it was postponed till May. My insurance is canceling on me, and I don't know if everyone is aware. In Florida, it's very, very difficult, um, to get insurance, period. A historical home is crazy difficult. Um, people are being denied over and over. Took me eleven tries, and I was given notification they would give me a grace period of thirty days to May meeting, so that I could, um, get the approval from Historical Preservation Agency. On May fourteenth, that meeting did not meet quorum, and I understand that there are some challenges with the personnel and finding people. I appreciate that. I'm a nurse leader. Uh, I worked in surgical services for thirty-five years, and I know what it's like to not have enough nurses, but we still have to care for patients. And here, um, we still have to care for the citizens, and we still have to do business. And so the meeting was canceled, and it is rescheduled for May, June. On Wednesday, at end of business, my insurance ends. I, I will have no insurance. And so to that, my ask is, if it's possible, to have some sort of emergency meeting, so that approval can be given. The homes directly to the left, directly to the right, directly in front of me and behind me, have the same pressed tin roof, and they all have received through precedence approval
Right.
um, for a new roof. And so my ask here this evening is, uh, if there's any way that this council can afford, can afford, to help, help me. Because without insurance, um, I will share with you, um, should anything happen in my home now. I, um, I'm in a tough spot. I moved here because of family, and I've only been here a short time. The residency are lovely and kind, and you don't find that everywhere. I'm relocating from Pensacola. So my ask here this evening is, um, any type of help. Um, I understand, um, you're interviewing and looking to appoint, um, new members here, but that's not going to happen till June. I'm going to guess, and I may be inaccurate, that they will not meet till July for approval. I'm, I'm in a tough spot here, so I just ask for your guidance.
We do need to get people on those boards, and it's very important. We always have trouble with it. We ask the community to step up, serve on these boards, and I know I've tried to encourage it earlier, and, uh, I know our staff has, uh, asked the grocery management, or manager, if there's anything you can do to help you, to speed it up. We'd appreciate it, but there's nothing the council doesn't actually do, but it, that is, it is our need to get people on those boards.
It's, it's, moving forward is going to be very problematic for those moving into the historical area to, um, meet the hoops, to meet the challenges that these insurance companies are laying out. I've had three onsite inspections, people from the insurance company checking out the house. I've never experienced that before. So, um, I'm hoping to help serve this community in any way, but I ask for, um, some sort of.
Okay, like I say, there's nothing we can do, but she's got management.
Well, please be aware, this is problematic, and thank you.
Uh, Ms. Hill?
Yes, um, you was the second person that has, uh, spoken to, well, have spoken to me about, um, needing help at their home with the roof. And, um, I called the county manager, and, uh, I spoke with him about it. And he, the only thing he could tell me was that at one point in time, there was a program out there. I don't know if it's, it has expired, but you can go out to this, um, this little trailer fire booth. That's where he directed me to tell the other person to go out there, see if there was any kind of assistance that they could give. So I'm telling you, saying, if you could, I don't know exactly where it's at, or you can call the county manager, uh, and get some, and they can point you in the right direction on, uh, where to try to maybe get some help.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Mr. McNally, I just want to clarify, I believe you're saying you have to get approval for the new roof through the Historical Preservation Agency. I think that's the, that's the hangup, right?
That's correct. Everybody has done what they needed to do, but it is the approval through the Historical Preservation that is holding this process.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, John Price?
Six twenty-one P M.
First of all, Mr. Hewitt, I want to address something that you've just addressed now. You know the curb right there, uh, the Blue Home, called the Blue Home? On the way home, what was it, yesterday?
Uh, it was Saturday, it was going to the store.
Yeah, and then we fell right there, because you know how, like, one example, we give you an example of what it looks like. From there to here, and he goes to try to step with his walking cane and everything else, right? And his cane went in the hole, like this, and he tried to put out at the same time. His whole leg right here went somewhere weird, and tripped it.
Yeah, the toes. I got the bruise on my thumb right there to show for where I hit the pavement.
And he's got a scrape mark on his kneecap, but he's already had leg surgery because of what happened a few years back.
Six years ago, to be exact.
Yeah. That's only what he's wanting to address on that point. And see, we can try to, you know, like, get like a grill or something put there somehow.
Or else leveling that slope because if it'll trip me, it's, I don't know if anyone has ever taken a census, but I know for a fact that I'm not the only blind person that lives here in this town. And what I would like to see happening, of course, this is something that I brought up a little more than twenty-one years ago. These streets around here aren't safe. You got stoplights and walklights, but for me and other people like me, they don't work. We don't know if it's safe to cross over or not, because the lights don't make audible signals. Now, twenty-one years ago, I have seen up close and personal a working model of a signal light that lets you know audibly when it's safe to cross over, because it'll tell you out loud with a synthetic voice where it's safe to cross over at, because it'll say the names of the intersections out loud. But since then, nobody's talked about putting them in. And not only do I fear for me and other people like me, I also fear for the other types of disabled people, like the wheelchair bound people, because truth be told, it's not safe for, for those ladies and gents either. And I would like to see that changed, and also, all the streets that don't have sidewalks on them, it doesn't make any sense to me that, uh, that we have to walk the streets when a lot of times it's not safe to be out there in the streets, because people don't watch where they're going. That's why I think that, uh, something needs to be done, so it's written into the budget that sidewalks have been put in on every street around here. And to add insult to injury, the streets that do have sidewalks, you got people illegally parking on them, like, they're parking lots. And I know that, uh, I speak for, not only myself, but a lot of the people that pay taxes around here, that there is, it's not acceptable to us, because those sidewalks are for to be for people that walk, not for people to park their cars on. So I'm wondering, if anything, when is a better change gonna happen here?
We'll have him, but we've always had that issue, and with handicap accessible, and we need to keep looking into it. It is expensive to do, but we need to keep working on it, and thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir.
That's all I wanted to do, is just check into it.
All right, uh, Noel Walker?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Noel Walker, fourteen hundred Northwest Ricketson Glen. Um, as many of you guys know, I, I am currently the only mayoral candidate for the upcoming year, uh, and my whole platform is on proactivity. Uh, proactivity in safety, proactivity in growth, and proactivity in dignity for citizens of Lake City. Um, and I want to give you guys a couple of kudos on some things for your proactivity in the last council meeting. Uh, starting with, uh, accountability on the quarter of a million dollars that council lost. Taking the activity and the, being proactive, I'm going back and, uh, finding how the council might recoup those dollars for the taxpayers, right? Um, over the last couple of years, we've also lost a lot of money in grant funding on projects around town. I think this council should keep that proactivity and find out where the bug stops on the loss of those grant funds and do our best to recoup and, and get those projects underway. Uh, also, I'd like to give you guys kudos on moving forward or moving in a direction with our city manager. Uh, that'll put us on a proactive path and very grateful for that, that you guys made that decision in our movement forward and higher. Uh, I think that'll, that'll put all of our departments into a state of alignment, uh, which is incredibly important for in this city. And then I also want to, uh, give you guys kudos on, uh, being proactive with our public safety and supporting our fire department and buying the equipment necessary that as this community grows, we can stay up to date. And as the lady spoke here, with insurance issues and housing, that'll go along the way to keep our citizens' insurance, uh, under control here in our area. So just want to give you guys some kudos on proactivity. I look forward to being a proactive mayor and having a proactive city government that serves our citizens.
Thank you.
Okay, next is, uh, bring with the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
The motion that said that approved the consent agenda, uh, first.
I.
Okay, next, uh, presentation, North East Florida, Lake City, donation of five hundred to Dorford, a ceremony of excellence. Councilmember takes your due.
Yes, uh, Ms. Bradley, would you come forward, please?
Thanks y'all for what y'all do. Item seven is, uh, open a public hearing of city council ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two seventy-one.
Uh, would you read that back, Karen?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilman. Uh, you have before your ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash two two seven one on second and final reading. An ordinance to the city of Lake City, Florida relating to compensation of mayor and members of the city council in the Article Two, Section Two dash fifty-three of the City Code Ordinance. Ordinance is providing definitions, providing compensation amounts, providing procedures to adjust compensation amounts, providing direction for codification of this ordinance. Repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing separability and providing for an effective date. Should the council wish to adopt this ordinance appropriately, I shall review and adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash two two seven one. It's read by title only.
Okay, Mr. Tyler, you want to speak on this?
Public here. You want to put the public here.
You're what?
I said the public here.
Yes.
I, I, you know, the public here, I want to be sure that I'm speaking on public here as I am not ever. Public here, oh?
Yeah.
Wait, I want to be sure.
Maybe the public here.
Okay, let our body level fifty-six north east basketball court. Now, um, I try to be brief, you just be telling me a little bit of time. In the last budget cycle, if you recall, uh, there was a discussion about how the council being compensated. And at that point in time, you were divided by the city attorney that you had divided by the ordinance. The ordinance said you get your raise, whatever raise you, employees, you get the same raise. So that was the zone that you got that raise. Now, this, this ordinance is designed to afford a citizen opportunity to have input in that process. I hate to be so elementary about this, but this is not saying you can't get a raise. What this is saying is that before you get a raise, you, you have to identify that raise prior to the voting process, pass the residency, determine what the raise is. So the board has to have some input in it. It's hypocritical, it is selfish to think that you own a city council and just vote yourself a raise without any input from the board.
This ordinance does that, what you're saying.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. And I guess I'm speaking to those who may be opposed to it. I don't, I don't understand that, I don't understand that the concept of getting with the transparent, it's just being transparent. I mean, you don't have a right to just say I'm giving myself a raise without public input. Uh, it, it, it's selfish, it's, it's immature, it's political, now you even do that. Mayor, right now the council make nineteen thousand dollars three hundred and ninety-four seventy a year. You make twenty-one thousand here and nineteen thousand seventy-two cents a year. By, by law, you require to meet every first and third, uh, Monday of the year. That's, that's twenty-four all of the month. That's twenty-four meetings a year. You got some other special meetings. I did some math, broke that down, that's six, seven hundred dollars per meeting. Now, I know you do other things, you go, go to meetings, you go to concerts, everything you have to do as a city council person. But suggest that a city council person get the same raise as employee is, is, that's not right. Incoming employee from the city of Lake City in the public works department is thirty-one thousand dollars a year. That, that's the lowest of the salary. That person make forty hours a week. And right now, you make twenty-one thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars less than he make, or she make. The rest you make about the same thing. That don't make, that, that's just going to add up to me. So for, for transparency's sake, Mayor, I think that this city council should vote for this, for this ordinance and approve it so that there be some transparency in this process. If you want a raise, put it in a resolution. If you're afraid of what the people going to say, don't worry about it. You know, can you imagine a coach of a football team deciding he gonna give himself a raise without talking to the owners? But citizens, they, they sit and own this city council, um, own this city, not the city council. So it seems to me, if you want to be respectful, that you can come to the, to the citizen and say, we deserve a raise. We go to the club, we put all these hours, we volunteer, we do this, we do that. As a matter of fact, it won't count as a, and I donate, donate, donate mine to somebody. Well, that missed the point. It, it's the taxpayer's money. So don't leave it to somebody that don't satisfy a situation, situation in that you should not get a raise without public input and that's why it's a lot harder to take that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bond. Mr. Bond, I, I, I got a, I got a question.
I'd be glad to answer.
When you go to the grocery store and I go to the grocery store, we have to pay the same thing, correct?
That's correct.
When inflation go up, it don't only go up for you, it go up for me as well.
That's correct.
So what's the, I mean, it's not like we voting to give ourselves a, we gonna be voting to give ourselves a outstanding raise. I'm just asking that every, if the cit-, um, city employees get a, a three percent raise, I think the council should have a three percent raise.
And the ordinance allow for that.
But you saying, we, you saying we need to bring this to the, to the public.
Well, bring to the public because there's a resolution, if you ready, that, that, you have to pass a resolution prior to it being in the budget. So you still can get the raise.
But why, but, but why, why do we need to vote on it?
Why you need to vote on it?
You, why do we?
For the same reason you vote on the budget.
Why do we need to vote on giving ourselves a raise? You should, I mean, we can give ourselves a raise of, of any, of any amount. But I'm, but the way you saying is, we need to get permission from you.
No, 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 no.
No, I'm just saying, but you saying come to the public to get okay for us to get a raise.
Exactly, and I stand on that a thousand percent.
I'm, I'm, I'm standing on my, I'm, I'm.
If this is a job to make money and if I'm for that reason, you're for the wrong reason.
But again.
It's going to be, you asked me to, you asked me to stop, so I, I, man, I'm not going to be disrespectful.
All right.
But what I'm, what I'm saying is this, that a resolution saying, okay. I, I, I hate to be, I'm getting too elementary here. The ordinance clearly says that prior to the budget process, that if you want to give yourself a raise, that that must be done by resolution prior to putting it into the budget for consideration. What you got now is, is that we want to get the city employees ten percent raise and we get ten percent raise. Well, the, it, the, the city council don't do the same kind of work that, that employee does. If you want to give yourself a, a constant limit raise, then make a constant limit raise pursuant to, to, to a resolution. But just to suggest that you get the same thing that everybody else get, it don't make sense to me. I mean, what, what, what's wrong with the public having some input in it? Are you afraid that the public gonna say no? I mean, the public got some rights, you talking, Councilman, you talking about the public money. You're not talking about your personal business, you're talking about the public money. And, and I think that's where we missing the point here, that, that it's the public money. And I think the city council needs to start thinking to what's good for the public. It, it's no different than the, the last meeting, Mayor, I'm gonna say this, I'm gonna say that, I promise you. In the last meeting, the, the, the city council decided that they're gonna take this issue off the agenda because you requested it. Well, the problem with that, we had a first, we had a first reading on that two weeks prior to that and it passed two to one. The charter said the quorum is three members of the city council, so when there's a quorum, the city business to take place. And you decide that you don't do the city business because everybody not here, in what way did that stop? And so, you know, I mean, y'all vote like you want to vote, but, uh, I, I think it's a slap in, in the public face to say that I'm gonna give myself a raise and because, because the limit goes up, so I get one too. That's fine, but I say this, it, it's the reason that people own the city council is, is the making money, then y'all are sitting out for the wrong reason.
But, but I'm gonna say something, I'm gonna be through it. I'm not here to make money. But to be here, I think that the councils should get a three percent raise, just like the rest of the city employees.
And I do too, if you, if you put it in a resolution and vote on it. I mean, we're saying the same thing. I mean, what's the difference in a resolution and you just hiding any input? It was, it was a lot of good discussion last time, Councilman, here, and, uh, citizens in this community, that's why you need a watchdog. Citizens in this community are reading, but, oh, look, man, grand day, his raise is built in. Then we try to stop it, try to stop it. Oh, look here, he finna put a little bill in this thing for the city manager, for the council just to take trips in. If butt fuck people come to the city council, raising here, pointing out something, and city councils all over this country doing anything they want to. And all I'm saying to you is that you still can get it. And I don't understand the, the feel of a resolution, I, I don't, I, I don't get that. I'm sorry, I don't get it.
I have one comment, and my comment is not really pertaining to the raise, but, um, it's, it's the part-time for me because I don't want, I don't want, um, people to, to get the impression that we don't do anything but sit at this dials. We don't do anything but come to these meetings. Let me tell you something, my phone ring every day. Sometimes I have to get out of my house, turn my stove off, leave and go and look. Sometimes they just want you to look at something, go and look at something. And on my phone every day calling this city, um, this city hall, speaking to one in administration practically every day. I know Johnson is sick of me. He's probably made, what, a little over five thousand dollars and he's made it too, baby. Um, it, it's a whole lot that entails this, y'all, so I don't want you all to get the impression that we're part-time and this is all we do. There's a lot of work being done. And I, I, I see the other council, but I know what Councilwoman Young is doing. And I'm not, by no means bragging, I'm not complaining. I enjoy working for the people, I enjoy working with people, I have no problem with that, but this is well over a part-time job.
Well, unfortunately, unfortunately, I, I know what it is to be a city councilman, I know what it is to be in government, I worked for Congress for twenty-four years, I've met most city councilmen, probably even about number, number ten. All I'm saying is this, that this is a, a vacant position and you knew what it was paid for when you went into it and.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add my two cents, obviously, I, I made my position clear, uh, when we passed it the first time. I'll just say that in my opinion, a political position of any kind is effectively a meritocracy. There's a couple of different ways that we can get out of here, recalls, lose elections, et cetera. Um, I feel like, you know, I mentioned it last time, but I feel like us as a council owe the city some, some wins. I feel like we've disappointed them a lot, a lot, the last few years. And quite frankly, I think we should be able to look them in the eyes, come a bunch of time and say, you know, this win, this win, this win, this win, these are the reasons we believe we've worked hard enough to deserve a raise when that time comes. So for me, I think, I believe you voted with me last time, I think, uh, there's nothing wrong with putting it into the, to the, to the, uh, to the citizens and having a resolution on it. And I think it's healthy for the city and for the relationship between us and the people.
I'm gonna do something out of order here, I've had this late and, and this happens a lot, then it won't happen.
Man.
It's off topic, but Erica May has want to speak and I want to take one.
Mayor, I had a, I, I wanted to talk about that too as well. Ms. Mayor, you, you, you know, um, raise and resolution, uh, in the budget, you know, like, I, 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 the only, only thing I'm confused on is it's been done for years. You hear people say, hey, I've been on the city council, I've been the mayor, I've been this and that. Nobody said anything about, uh, making a resolution in order, uh, for you to get a, a raise or a pay or whatever the case may be. Um, uh, I, I hate to agree with, uh, so, some people sometime, but the citizens, uh, need to be well informed. Not, not just one person, but the citizens need to be well informed on how city government works. If it needs to be in a resolution and all the, the cities, I mean, all the, the citizens is aware of this, not just one person coming up here, uh, uh, making a speech. But the citizens, if they are so concerned about a, a resolution or the city council's getting a raise, I think that the citizens should come up here and speak to that effect. Um, and, and I'm almost, uh, sure that the citizens, especially, uh, District fourteen, uh, they well aware of what goes on and how people try to control, uh, what we do, how we do it. But there's been some, uh, eras in, in, in the past and those eras, people still benefit from it, from, uh, to this day, they're still benefit from those area, uh, from those, uh, those eras. And so, again, um, I'm, I'm all with Ms., Ms. Young, all with Ms. Hill. And, uh, I, I don't think that it should be a resolution, uh, to, uh, to do that. I think it should, uh, come accordingly. Uh, and if the citizens have a problem with it, they come up and they, and they present themselves in a professional manner. And, uh, if you say no, the answer's no, if you say yes, the answer's yes, it's just that simple, you know, I don't. If, if we could educate ourselves on budget resolutions and, and, and one or two people coming up here changing the, uh, uh, the agenda. Uh, but, uh, I, I think we, we own this, uh, city council for a reason. People has put us in these positions for a reason and we should, um, uh, give them that much respect, we should give them that.
I can, then I, I want to speak real quick.
Mr. Mayor, I, I just wanted to check what this was, again. So passing this gives them that, not passing this does not.
Exactly.
Okay, okay, and, and I, and I, and I stand by it, I will not pass it.
Okay, so you don't believe they should have the right to put their input in?
Yeah, I want, I want the citizens to come, not one or two people to come up here and speak on it, that's what I said.
Mr. Mayor, I, I never done this before, I'm not wrong, I'm sure.
Uh, but, but anyway.
Let him speak.
One or two people, one, one voice is important. I resent that comment. This person here, what, what happened up here? The citizens, how many times have Councilwoman Judd have been to this podium on behalf of somebody else? How many times, Mayor? That's what, that's what, that's what I do. I'm not trying to control anything. I'm saying to y'all that, I mean, it, it, it's so hypocritical to say that I want the citizens to come and, and it's as simple as that, they don't want, they won't do it. Well, put in a resolution and citizens have opportunity to speak to it. What you saying now, we gonna put it in the budget and hope the citizens see. Man, that is naive, it's all out, Mayor.
Okay, I can repeat this.
Yeah, I, I don't have, but, yeah, hey, I mean, give me a break.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, you're not a person.
Yeah, I'm not a person.
Mayor, I, I want to address Mr. Carter because it's just, it just doesn't sit well with me and no disrespect. But, um, it's not like a campaign speech to me and I hope he doesn't have an opponent. Um, no win. Now, it, it, it's just disrespectful. Now, it's just disrespectful, I think, for a council member that just got here and can sit here and say no win. But there are some people who will come in here from the public and say, there's been some wins. So I just don't, I don't receive that way.
Now, Mr. Mayor.
She's here.
Mr. Mayor.
Hello, Erica Mayo, Lake City Road. So the council meetings are pretty interesting when I come. I wasn't gonna speak on that, but I do agree with Mr. Carter. The public has a say-so in everything that you guys do because they're top of the organization chart. So I think that the citizens control you guys, whether you guys want it to be that way or not. But that's not what I was coming up here to talk about. I apologize for being late. I do try to deal with the youth, I was coaching, and I do that for free over the summer. No matter how long it takes, it takes pretty much 24 hours of my day. I fly out of state and everything else, and it's for free. And if those kids wanted me to get paid, they would say so. But I was coming to talk on the PNC Committee. I think I walked in at the tail end of this individual speaking about the board not having enough people for quorum. I know there's been three, possible four applicants that have applied, and I was just wondering, when is that gonna take place? Because like herself, there are several individuals that are having issues with the insurance and different things being approved in historic district. And if there's applicants, and this applicant came the last meeting, and it was supposed to be placed on the agenda for this meeting, but it was not, and we have applicants again here, it's not on the agenda. So I think that's where Mr. Carter is saying there's a lot of failures for the citizens of Lake City. So I was just wondering.
I don't know, that's what I'm asking, we need to move forward.
Okay, because they've turned them in. I know you said that, you know, you are waiting for applicants, but there's like four of them that turned them in already. And they were supposed to be on the agenda, which was last, the last meeting it said it was gonna be on the agenda, but it didn't make it again.
We gonna deal with it.
Okay, so that means...
I don't know what else to say.
Okay, all right.
Okay, and, okay, if their motion asks the city council ordinance 2024-2271.
Move to approve ordinance 2024-2271.
Second. Yeah, I don't second. All right, discussion.
Yes, I got it. Now, again, in the past, don't wanna call anyone out. Before the council, again, before this council looked like it looked now, that 3% raise was not an issue. But now the council look like it look now. With us asking for a 3% raise is a problem. The public wanna have input on it. There's something wrong with that picture.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Mr. Hill, I think that's unfair. I think...
Yeah, I think it's unfair for us not to get this 3% raise. We're gonna have to have the vote.
I think the suggestion is unfair.
Well, if it's unfair, why all of a sudden come up now? Why didn't it come up in the past?
I think the city used to run a lot better, quite frankly.
Say what?
I think the city used to run a lot better, quite frankly.
Yeah, I do too.
I think that's why I don't think it passed. In all fairness, I just was, you know, because I was mentioned in the Councilwoman Hill's statement a moment ago. I work a full-time job, 40 to 50 hours in addition to this. This phone, my city phone, does stay busy. I've been having a ball getting involved and trying to help people. And I think it's just the type of job it is.
It is.
The type of job it is, is a servant job, and I believe that we are serving the citizens, and I want them to come and tell us they approve.
I bet you don't get more phone calls than I get. I guarantee you don't.
Maybe not.
And I said, and use a new call.
Yeah, I don't know the relevance to the amount of phone calls, but...
But it's not, it's not relevant.
True.
But you're talking about the phone calls you get.
I'm just saying, I also, my phone stays busy this...
Okay, mine may be busy too. They're trying to pick up my phone call.
Okay.
Mr. Carter.
Yay.
Mayor Witt.
Yay.
Mr. Hill.
No.
Ms. Young.
No.
Mr. Carter again.
No.
Okay, if they will, we will.
All right.
We, they've introduced a resolution on their own business, on the due business, we're opening a quasi judicial hearing. Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have before you, in a quasi judicial manner tonight, ordinance number 2024-2284. It's an ordinance considering an application for voluntary annexation submitted by JCP-VYP LLC. The purpose of these procedures is to ensure that an applicant provides a complete presentation of their request to the council prior to any testimony being provided by staff so that a full and fair hearing of the application is received before any decision by the council is made based on the evidence presented. This time, I'd like to ask, who is here to speak on this particular matter? I see Mr. Young from city staff back there, is there anyone else? Okay, thank you. The city council's decision should be based on competent substantial evidence tonight. Competent substantial evidence is evidence that a reasonable mind would accept as adequate to support a conclusion. There must be facts in the record to support any opinion testimony. People presenting testimony may support what they're saying by relying on factual information provided by city staff, the applicant, or other information included in the city staff report. At this time, I need to inquire of each council member individually if they've received any ex parte communications involving this matter, and if so, to disclose them. Councilwoman Young, have you had any ex parte communications?
I have not.
Okay, Councilwoman Carter?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
No.
Councilwoman Hill?
No.
And Councilman Dernigan?
No.
Okay, thank you. At this time, if Mr. Young could come forward and take an oath. Do you swear to tell the truth, all the truth, and nothing but the truth, self-deprecating?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Members, before you, you have proposed ordinance 2024-2284, which states an ordinance of the city of Lake City, Florida, pursuant to petition number ANX24-03 relating to voluntary annexation, making findings annexing certain real property located in Columbia County, Florida, which is reasonably compact and contiguous to the boundaries of the city of Lake City, Florida, and to the boundaries of the city of Lake City, Florida, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date. Mr. Young, if you could provide an introduction and summary of the proposed ordinance, and seeing as how you're the only one here, just go ahead and move straight on into the full presentation.
This is a voluntary annexation. This property is located on the south side of West US Highway 90, just west of the auto parts store at the intersection of US 90 West and State Road 247. This property is part of an enclave that we're working on trying to get into the city. So these people have graciously wanted to volunteer to go ahead and do it now. They wanna put in a take five oil change. We have, county zoning is commercial intensive, and the zoning would remain the same, only it would be the city commercial intensive, which is allowable for what they wanna do. Letter was sent to the Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County back in April 23rd notifying of this. We have had no response back from them on whether they were going to deny it. This is... Get to the right pages. We did a business impact estimate as required by state law, and it fell under one of the exemptions, which is the proposed ordinance is required for compliance with federal and state law or regulation. And that's about all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Young, and you're moving your staff report into the record?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Young, for the council? Is there anyone else here wishing to speak to this matter? Thank you. The decision of the city council should be based only on the evidence provided by sworn witnesses. In addition, the application may be adopted if the property proposed to be annexed is contiguous to the current municipal boundary, if the property proposed to be annexed is reasonably compact, and if the application for voluntary annexation bears the signatures of owners of property in the area proposed to be annexed. Otherwise complies with applicable state laws and does not confer special privileges or rights on any person. At this time, the city council may discuss the application and testimony, any findings of fact upon which the board wishes to base its decision, and vote on proposed ordinance number 2024-2284, following an appropriate motion and second. Should you wish to adopt the ordinance, the appropriate motion would be to adopt ordinance number 2024-2284. It's read by title only. Move to adopt ordinance 2024-2284. Second.
The motion has a second.
Mr. Carter.
Yay.
Mr. Dernigan.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Ms. Young. Mayor Witt.
Yes. Okay, our amendment of resolution, the city council resolution, 2024-2271. You wrote three times. Mark, read that by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before commencing, my gut tells me that this is gonna be a fairly lengthy discussion. I was gonna request a short break before we move into the discussion of this particular resolution.
Okay. We'll take a ten-minute break and go just about seven, beginning of the show.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm not going to go through every section because I believe everybody up here has had a chance to read the entire document. I'm just going to go through and highlight the changes that were made since you reviewed the last version of it.
Okay.
And so with that in mind, the first change was in section two, paragraph F. It was brought to our attention by a member of the media that the language accepted by requiring the employee's resignation to be accepted by the governing body could be subject to multiple interpretations that would be detrimental to the city. And so we inverted that and changed it from accepted by the governing body to submitted to the governing body.
Just speaking of mine, your voice is really kind of awful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Don't need to repeat that, or we?
If you will, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we're looking at section two, paragraph F. And it was pointed out to us by a member of the media that the phrase that requiring the manager's resignation to be accepted by the governing body could be subject to misinterpretation in the context in which it was used in that paragraph. So we inverted the language and instead of staying in a way that requires the city to accept the resignation, we're requiring the manager to submit his resignation. So it's less apt to be misunderstood. Are you still?
That was just a little distracted. You go ahead.
Okay. The next change was in section three.
Okay, you say "we." Who is "we"? You say a member of the media, and you are a member of the media, and one of the councils or the mayor. Who is "we"? That's what I was.
So that actually was brought to my attention by Councilman Carter. That issue had been brought up by a member of the media, and he brought it to my attention. And I concede that it was subject to misinterpretation, and so I made the change.
Okay.
And it doesn't really make any change in the substantive intent of that paragraph, but it makes it less apt to be misinterpreted.
Good job, Mr. Carter.
Section three, paragraph A. From multiple members of the council, I heard comments regarding the salary being above the 160, 160,000 that was advertised. I took those comments to Mr. Rosenthal, and he agreed to reduce the ask for his annual base salary from 165 to 162,500, or $2,500 a year reduction. So that is in that paragraph.
Then you say "we" again. Who brought that to your attention?
That was brought to my attention by Councilman Carter and Councilman Hill particularly. And if, would the council like me to disclose all of my communications I had with members of the council, or?
Well, I mean, when you say "we," I don't know. I know you ain't talking about me, but you know, when you say "we," I thought I was included. I didn't know I was excluded.
Well, I mean, there are things in here that are also based off of comments you made, and yours were in writing, so.
Yeah, you could say, you could say "I did that," if you want. I don't have a problem with that. But don't say "we," because I didn't know this had took place.
Okay.
Okay.
The next section is section four, paragraph five. There were comments that were shared with me. I don't know where they came from, but via the city clerk, stating that some people were concerned about, and I don't know which ones they were, but concerned about the cost of life insurance. Taking that into account, I reached out to Mr. Rosenthal. And when I say "we," Mr. Rosenthal and I discussed the matter. And we tightened up the language in paragraph C in a manner that does not require the city to pay for life insurance at this point in town, but because no one knows the cost of that insurance. And Mr. Rosenthal and I worked out language that says within six months following the effective date of the agreement, the employer will provide three life insurance quotes from three underwriters of his choosing in coverage amounts of one, two, and three times the base salary, basically to give a range of coverages and premiums due. And the employer, the city, agrees to look at those and negotiate in good faith with Mr. Rosenthal to amend the agreement to pay for a term life insurance policy for the employee. It would be, notwithstanding all of that, there is an absolute limitation that whatever the city would pay would be limited to $500 per month. But it gives him a chance to shop around with someone and see if he can find something perhaps even better than what the city's current employee policy offers, and something that should at last beyond his employment with the city, he would continue paying that himself if he chose to, and he could probably ensure. Section five, item A. Give me just a second to read my notes here. I believe this was based on your comments, Councilman Dernigan?
Yes.
Regarding the portability or the, not portability, but the compensation for the 80 and 80 of vacation leave and sick leave that he would receive upon, and having a bank upon employment. He was fine with the concept of not receiving any compensation for that upon termination from the city. It's a gift for him coming in, and if he doesn't use it, then he would have to give back the 80 and 80, and whatever balance he would have left would be what he'd be compensated for. And then the change in item B there is just a renumbering. To make it clearer, I separated out a sentence into its own paragraph, and so I had a transitional phrase in there.
Thank you.
Section eight, item F. I believe this came from your comments, Councilman Dernigan?
Yes, he did.
Where it was stated, the, there were concerns about personal use of the electronic equipment. And so we changed it and just took out personal use, so it's business use only. And it shall, to clarify, down at the bottom added a phrase that says that the property shall remain the property of the employer during the employee's employment, and to the extent the, and this is not from you, to the extent the possession of and, let me read those things, remain the property during employee's employment by the city, and to the extent in the possession of it, and the use by the employee at the end of employee's employment shall become the property of employee at the end of employee's employment. So whatever electronic equipment he's got, he would just take with him.
No, that's not what I said.
I know, that's what I'm saying. You did not say that.
Well.
That was.
I wanted you to put that in there too, because there, he's got the floor right now. Go ahead. Okay. So, so I just didn't understand, when your job is over and we give you equipment, that equipment needs to be returned back unless, unless they go through their proper channels to buy that equipment, for example, procurement? I mean, you could, you could always, you know, have an opportunity to buy your equipment, but I just don't think that we should. Well, let me back up. I don't think that the phone that, that I have, when, let's say, for example, I decide not to run anymore, or if I decide to resign, I need to return that, that phone back to the city because that is city property.
If, if it is the desire of the council that he not take any of his equipment with him, I don't think that's a deal breaker, and then we can make that change.
Well, I agree. I agree that when he departs from the city, that whatever he has, laptop, phone, whatever, that comes back to the city.
And I'm sure that there is a risk there, the city, all of the information that's in that electronic. And I'm sure IT can help us out with that. It's not wise for that to not be turned back over to the city.
Okay. So he, all the electronic equipment stays with the city, and that is the city's. Okay.
How you feel about that?
That's fine. May as well as.
The next change was in section nine, paragraph A. Give me just a second to catch up here. This was a change that I put in as I was making other changes. I felt like this needed to be clarified. And so the clarification being provided in the additional blue language in the document is, so the design of the termination provisions, let me kind of back into it that way, is that the only circumstances where he would be entitled to a severance are those circumstances listed in items one through five under paragraph A. Anything else that would occur that would result in his termination would not entitle him to severance. Now, the city could negotiate it. There are reasons to negotiate it, sometimes many times if there is a possibility of a legal dispute upon his departure, it may be worth the city's time and money to pay a severance in exchange for a release of liability. But he wouldn't be entitled to it. It would be something that would be negotiated, and, and the city council would have a say-so. You'd have a say-so in any of it, but that in particular, you know, you'd be negotiating a number. It would not be a contracted for number in terms of severance. And the same thing with the release. You know, we would also be negotiating the terms of the release and what the city is being released from and what he is being released from as well. So all, that is the design of, of the termination section is, A lists the five ways he's entitled to severance. Anything beyond that, outside of that scope, he is not. And that is why I added the blue language, was to be clear about that particular fact. Notwithstanding that, paragraph B does talk about termination for cause and the ability, under that extreme circumstance, for the city to terminate him and say, and even though it kind of goes without saying, it says that if it's a termination for cause, absolutely you're not entitled to any sort of severance.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, and I appreciate that. Again, so, so you come up with these five reasons, and where'd you get these?
times, if there is a possibility of a legal dispute upon his departure, it may be worth the city's time and money to pay a severance in exchange for a release of liability. But he wouldn't be entitled to it. It would be something that would be negotiated, and the city council would have to say so. You'd have to say so in any of it, but that in particular, you know, you'd be negotiating a number. It would not be a contracted-for number in terms of severance. And the same thing with the release. You know, we would also be negotiating the terms of the release and what the city is being released from and what he is being released from as well. So that is the design of the termination section, is A lists the five ways he's entitled to severance. Anything beyond that, outside of that scope, he is not. And that is why I added the blue language, was to be clear about that particular fact. Notwithstanding that, Paragraph B does talk about termination for cause and the ability, under that extreme circumstance, for the city to terminate him, and says, and even though it kind of goes without saying, it says that if it's a termination for cause, absolutely you're not entitled to any sort of severance.
Okay. Yes, and I appreciate that. Again, so you come up with these five reasons, and where'd you get these five reasons from?
So the base document that was used is the ICMA, or International City Managers Association Model Contract. So that was the base document that was used. And that, I believe, all five of these, in some flavor, I can't remember off the top of my head if I did not modify these in some fashion, but the five items, generally speaking, are the five items that were in the model contract that we based this off of.
Okay. And again, I'm hoping that this never happens. You know, I believe he's going to be around a long time, so I don't want to even think about we terminating him or anything like that, but I just need to know exactly if he gets terminated, what is he entitled to and what's he's not entitled to. And it looked like to me you clarified that pretty good there. As long as he understands that, I think we could... I can't say "we," you know, we say "we," "me." I can live with this.
Okay. Are there any... I know that that probably is a section everybody is particularly interested in. Are there any questions about the determination section?
I have a question, but I do think that clarification is valid.
Okay. So moving on, the next change from what you were originally shown last week is in Section 10. There's one little change in Paragraph B from a C to a D, and that was to account for the renumbering that I did. So it's still a reference to the same thing. It just had a different number. It went from C to D. And then in Paragraph 10C, this is to further clarify your... or the change that was based on your comment and request, Councilman Jernigan, that any compensation for leave upon his termination, he would have to credit back to the city as part of that, the eighty hours he was given coming into it. Of course, he can't go negative. If it just goes negative, then it's zero, and he gets no compensation for any accrued leave or whether sick or annual.
That is correct, and I really appreciate that, and I'm pretty sure he understands that as well. And again, if anybody got any questions about that, we can always talk to personnel, and personnel, it don't matter what state or what city you're in, I suppose, what city that you're in, but that's something that I'm pretty sure Mr. Rosenthal is well aware. He cannot get paid for something that he has not earned. If he, you know, I think that use it or lose it, I think that's the way we used to look at it. So I don't think that he'll have a problem with that.
Okay. And I will tell you, everything in here, and I just got a text from him, even with the change with the equipment and returning the equipment, with that change and everything else in here, as it sits right now, he said he's ready to sign it. So just putting that out there. He's listening to the conversation via YouTube. He had to go to a child or grandchild's graduation this weekend, so he was unable to return. Those are the only changes that were made between what you were provided with initially last week and what you had in front of you tonight.
Okay, before we have so, Mr. Bowden would speak on this.
Well, I would be...
Okay. Well, we kind of have to speak real quick, and then we'll discuss where we're at.
Mr. Mayor, the concerns I had seem to have been addressed. Most of them have been addressed, so I hope that the city council will pass this, so Mr. Rosenthal will sign it, get it as quick as it possibly can. I shall hopefully, soon to be mayor, view that soon we get a city manager that our city is wanting to be. We feel as if we think that we can't improve a proper city manager with the town. I want to make this observation, however, though. Once Mr. Rosenthal get here, first of June, what we talking about?
That's what it is right now.
So the first of June. I recall that when Mr. Johnson went from being whatever he was to Mr. Dow to the interim city manager, his payroll bumped up to a hundred and thirty thousand, I think. I would assume that when Mr. Rosenthal get here, again, it's the taxpayers' money I'm talking about, not mine. If Mr. Rosenthal get here, then I would assume that we're not going, we being, people not going to pay Mr. Rosenthal a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars a year to tell him pay. Mr. Johnson, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year, because he would know, know to be the interim city manager. And the child say he can't be the acting city manager because he don't have a part of pitching, at least probably even be the acting, he assists the city manager. So I guess what I'm saying to you all is that pay some attention to the money because there's no reason for the assistant to pay Mr. Rosenthal a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars to be the city manager, and pay Mr. Johnson a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to be whatever he's going to be. Because I think that in all fairness to the public, necessarily go back to what he was making proud to become an interim city manager. And I want to say that on the record. And I also want to say on record that, I... Miss Sax is good about, she said, put her question, that, I don't know if y'all noticed, that the assistant city manager from the City Lake City requires to have a four-year degree. That's it. That's in the chart, you know, just like the city manager's required to have a four-year degree to be the city manager. The same thing applies for the city city manager. So if we go through this process with new city management, I would encourage y'all to follow the chart. That's the law. If you follow the chart, there's one person who never really is saying, since somebody said it was anything. But if you don't follow the chart, I'm gonna be like me, Coke used to be. I'm gonna be talking about the chart, the chart, the chart, the chart, the chart says what it says, and the council need to abide by that. So I'm looking forward to Mr. Rosenthal getting there. I never met him. I shook his hand, spoke to him, and said, and I probably won't talk to him for six months after he get here because I wanted to be sure he get his feet on under the desk. But I'm excited about this change that's about to take place, but watch out for money. Can't keep paying Mr. Johnson a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year to be whatever he is, Mr. Rosenthal.
Okay, Councilor.
Yes. Mayor, there was one on, I guess it's Section 16, and I guess for moving expenses, I guess it's ten thousand dollars. Yeah, you think it's... Oh, you...
Yeah, sixteen.
Oh, yeah. I thought it was... Those were all of the changes I had.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right.
Okay, so it says here on Section 16, he's got ten thousand dollars for relocating. I don't have a problem with the ten thousand dollars, but what I do have a problem with is that, okay, let's just say, for example, for him to move from point A to point B, it only costs him five thousand. What happens to the other five thousand?
Mr. Carter?
It says employee in amount not to exceed, so if it only cost him five, we would compensate him five, if I'm understanding that correctly.
No, no, I think he is, just like it says. According to... because I questioned this to him, by the fact, and he says, you know, we're going to give him ten thousand to move him here. And so I just wanted to make sure that we on the same page. If we're going to give him ten thousand, let's give him ten thousand, but if we're not, but it cannot exceed that, but let's say he spends nine thousand, nine hundred, ninety-nine dollars.
It says reimbursement, and he has to show a receipt for what he is reimbursed.
And if he spends eleven thousand, we don't give him eleven. He gets no more than ten.
He spends eight, he gets eight.
Okay, that's not what I read, but that's what y'all read. Let's just make sure we got it.
Write it down.
Huh?
Write it down.
But I read it. I mean, I know what the first contract says, and there's not too much difference from that one. And I understand that the ten thousand dollars is valuable. However, I'm just wondering, if he only spends nine...
That's what it says. If he only spends nine, he gets nine, too.
Okay, okay.
All right. Anybody else?
Oh, it's a good contract. I think he's a great one. I think he's having a good month.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with you. I think in many ways, it's a generous contract, but I also think it's a generous stack of problems to solve. So I think from my meeting with him and from our interview together here, I have a lot of faith in him, and I think he'll be good for the city.
I make a motion to make an agreement with Mr. Rosenthal for being our next city manager.
Second. Mr. Mayor, is that motion to approve the resolution for the council with the one change that was made tonight regarding the electronic equipment?
Yes.
Okay, and, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to point out, it was brought to my attention by HR, that there are certain requirements and contingencies, like, for example, he would have to pass the city's drug screening process. It really goes without saying, because it's in an ordinance, and there's nothing in the contract that can override a requirement by ordinance, but I just wanted to make clear for the record that he would have to go through all of the requirements of law as a condition of employment. And so if that would be part of the motion as well, the motion is subject to clearance of all the requirements of our law for employment.
Yes, okay.
Second.
There's a second. Before we miss time, I don't have my, the one that I actually took my notes on, but there was one that I really highlighted, and it was the surgical, the medical surgery. Let's...
Section 4A is where you...
Section 4A.
That's where that's from. That's Section 4A.
Is it verbal?
At the bottom, H2. On your B13.
Okay. Okay, legal. Section 4. We have the employer agrees to provide and to pay the premium for health hospitalization, surgical, vision, dental, and comprehensive medical insurance. Write that down for me, please.
I do not have the monetary amounts to break that down.
Oh, I don't need monetary amounts. Tell me the difference. What's the... you have the surgical. So what happens if he goes into surgery? What are we... there has to be a percentage.
So my understanding is the city's healthcare plan is a comprehensive plan that would cover the costs of surgery under that plan. So the health hospitalization, surgical, and comprehensive medical would be within one plan. The vision and dental would be, in Florida, are typically under separate plans that I understand the city offers. The city's obligation would be to pay for the full premiums for the insurance. Now, any copays he has to pay as a recipient of that insurance would be on him, but the city's obligation is to pay the base premium for the insurance under the city's insurance plan.
So when it says the employee, that's anything that falls under the insurance. If the insurance doesn't cover it, we're not bound.
Correct. We're just obligated to pay for the plan.
Did we have a second on that motion?
Yes, you did.
If it would make everyone more comfortable, we could add to that language... let me get back to it here just a second. Under the city's existing health insurance plan.
Yes.
Okay.
Passable.
All right. Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes. Yes.
Mayor, may I ask a clarification question?
Sure.
And it's just because of something that Mr. Martin just stated when Michelle was asking the question on Section 4. He said that this would allow the city to pay the full premiums for his health insurance.
The language right now would require to pay the premiums, not a fraction of, just plainly states the premiums.
Okay, it says equal to that which is provided to all other employees of the city of Lake City of Florida. So that doesn't mean full to me, so if your agreement is supposed to mean full, to me that doesn't say full. That says equal to. They don't pay for the other staff.
That makes sense. The city doesn't pay for the full premiums for it.
No.
Okay, then it would be in whatever fraction or amounts that, yes, others are.
I just wanted to make sure, because if you had told him full, I wanted to make sure that it said full, if that's what you'd agree to.
No, that was a bad assumption on my part, that I thought the city employees were all paid the full premium.
Anything else?
Exactly because of the...
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yeah.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mayor will?
Yes. Okay. All right, I have a chance. City Council Resolution 2024-044.
Shift gears. Just a second. All right. So council members, you have before you Resolution Number 2024-044. Resolution of the City of Lake City, Florida, recognizing a need for the restoration and preservation of the City of Lake City City Hall and the City of Lake City, Florida, recognizing a need for financial assistance through grant funding to complete the restoration and preservation of the City of Lake City City Hall, authorizing the city to apply for that certain State of Florida Department of State Historic Preservation Grant for grant funding in the amount of one million dollars in furtherance of restoration and preservation of the City of Lake City City Hall. Recognizing said grant requires a 25% match from the city, directing the city's finance department to earmark and set aside funds in the amount of $250,000, as the city is required matching funds in the event the city has awarded said grant. Making certain findings affect and support of the city applying for said grant, recognizing the authority of the mayor to execute such documents as are necessary to apply for said grant, directing the mayor to execute said documents revealing prior resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date should you wish to adopt. This resolution and appropriate motion would be to adopt Resolution Number 2024-044 as read by title only.
Okay, Dakota, you want to come up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Dakota Braun. I'm the Grant Specialist in the Finance Department. I'm here to present the grant to repair City Hall. This is the Florida Department of State Special Category Grant administered by the Division of Historical Resources. This grant provides up to a million dollars to repair historical properties, and City Hall being constructed in 1911 is a good candidate to receive these funds. This grant does require a 25% match. We would be earmarking the ARCA funds as that match for now, but that's just a placeholder until we can budget these funds in the next fiscal year budget cycle. So one thing we would do with these grant funds would be to repair the external brick facade, also reinforce the window openings and level certain areas of the first floor. If we... these funds, the matching funds would be contingent upon approval of the grant by the Department of State and acceptance of the grant by the City of Lake City. So this resolution today is just a formality so that we can apply for the grant. We're not accepting the grant today. If you have any questions about the grant, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
So all we're doing today is just saying, apply for it, and when it comes in, we can decide if, yeah, we want to get forward or don't.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Mr. Mayor, just checking, so in applying for the grant, we have to earmark the 250,000? That's part of their requirements, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
But if they come back and say, "We will give you the grant," we then have the choice to take or leave?
We could budget that in the next budget cycle, yes.
And Matt, you got any question? Thank you. Mr. Bowden, I think you want to speak on this, too.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make a comment about the 250,000 dollars spent earmarked. I understood the gentleman say that you will donate the 250,000 dollars from the op money so that you can apply for the grant, but he also mentioned that perhaps you can come up and budget that, because the budget process is not usually optimal.
Right.
I want to raise that issue, Mr. Mayor, because, you know, we have... I want to raise that issue, Mr. Mayor, because, you know, we, we had $6 million at the beginning, $250,000 set aside for restoration of this building, that's a good idea, you know, but I can tell you, $250,000 can be used to help some kids who are scared of it too. There's a lot of things using ARCA money as a problem, and what we got started doing and I think about the people themselves, I'm not opposed to, to the grant application, but I would be concerned if we use the $250,000 to actually pay for it, you know, if we can use the $250,000 for some youth programs and some other activities. And so it's easy to go to do it, but I would suggest to the city council that, yes, go ahead and apply for the grant, but don't guarantee that you're going to use the ARCA money to be matched, because that's illegal, that, 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 you just think the other way to do it. The other part I would make, Mayor, is this, that I think the ARCA coming to an end at some point in time, I think in 2025, so this grant will be available prior to the time that the ARCA money have to be set, but you got to use the ARCA money by the time it's served. So we'll know about this grant before the ARCA money and time.
Right.
That's the point of offering the grant.
That would be certainly before the budget, we'll have to budget and all this to do on it, so.
Yeah, but the, the time in terms of putting the city must spend the ARCA money.
Right, I got you.
So what I'm saying is that, that the, don't have the money earmarked and then not spend it, it goes back to the federal government, so we need to use the ARCA money for another purpose, if in fact you don't want it.
Okay, Mr. Brown.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve city council resolution number 2024-044.
Sir.
Any discretion?
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yeah.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mayor Will?
Yes. Out of a little discussion possible action of ARCA money, Mr. Hill.
Yes, I got with Mr. Johnson on, on this ARCA money pertaining to Gwynne Lake. We have 400 and something thousand set aside for Gwynne Lake, and I would like to take some of this money, this ARCA funds, to get started on Gwynne Lake, we've been talking about it for years, we got, we got enough funding now to, to get the ball really rolling on it, so I think we need to do something with, with this ARCA money.
Quick question, Mr. Hill, do you know how much you will need to go with the 400 and something thousand, do you have any numbers?
Mr., again, I was, with D again, he said, he didn't give me a ballpark figure, but he was saying the project would be about a million bucks, I mean, about a, about a million dollars.
Is that to complete the project, or that's just going to get us to?
Ms. William, Ms. William or Mr. Brown, could y'all come forward, please?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So there's a couple parts to it. The first part, on the engineering side, we looked at what it was going to take to restore the lake, and there was an environmental aspect of it, and when that got involved, what they basically said is we couldn't go in and dredge the lake because of the species of vegetation that was growing in it, so you have a cause and effect, and, and what's happening is the longer this, this, this goes on, the cost continues to rise, which is what Mr. William was helping us with. So what we found, that there is a structure at the back of the lake that has to be repaired. That's the very first thing we need to do, to Mr. Hill's point, to get the ball rolling. We've got to repair that structure to get the lake level back up. Once that's up, then we can go in and do the second phase, and I don't want to phase it out, Mr. Hill, that's not what I'm trying to say, but I'm trying to say there's, there's a couple of steps here. We have talked about a million dollars, we've talked about a million and five, we've talked about two million, we didn't even talk about what it may take to go up to do the sediments, so there are several aspects of it, so, Mr. Hill, I agree with you, I hate to put a price tag exactly on it, but we got to start somewhere, and with the ARCA funds, we could start with the structure in the back. Any questions on that?
But we do have money as, as well as, as the ARCA money set aside.
Correct, yes, correct.
Do you have a question for me?
No, unless it's something you want to share with us.
No, I, I agree that, you know, the city is getting very dedicated, we're trying to find a solution for Gwynne Lake, and I talked to D as well, and he was dedicated to going ahead and paying for the engineering, having the city go ahead and pay for the engineering, and then grants, well, we can, we can call this a shovel-ready project, and it's, it's a lot better when we're applying for grants to have that shovel-ready project. So, yeah, I am excited that we do have some funds, and that we should go ahead and move forward with that, that now structure, so that we can move up to the dredging and the cleaning and restoration of Gwynne Lake, and then deal with the sediment issues.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question through Mr. Mayor. Obviously, that Gwynne Lake project has been going on for some time, so it would be nice to see if some resolution of that, for sure. The structure, is there, is there a number of any kind yet on that first repair?
I don't, I don't know, I have that number, I don't have it right now, but that, I can tell you of the overall project, that would be the lesser of the two, the dredging is going to be very expensive, but, but you can't do one without the other, there's no sense of dredging without the structure, because you can't keep the level of the lake up in that, and then when the water management district got involved, that was one of the things, that was, that was a real big hurdle for us because of the plant life that is growing there due to the water level dropping. When it turned environmental, they put the brakes on it, they wouldn't let us do anything. So until we get to that, we're really stuck, but I, I can, I can try and get that number as quickly as possible and get it circulated, so that you'll be able to see exactly what the structure component would be, and how that relates to the 400,000 we have, and then as far as, that's what I would look at next, if, if you'd like staff to do that.
Yes.
Okay.
A question, how many phases do you, how many phases is this going to be?
So, when it first started, I think it was four or five phases is what they originally talked about doing, and it was going to go all the way up to the back of the tobacco barns towards the Lake Jeffrey area. What we done is we've put the, we've put the sediment trap in that originally stopped the sediment from coming down, and, and it was kind of beaching out into the, to the waterway. So we have that component in, so what that basically does is it allows us to manage that sediment now, and we can keep removing that as it comes down, so we really want to go in and go to the, like, the third or fourth phase of it, which is, is the purification of the lake and getting it back to its original state. So historically, we would have said four to five phases, but we've kind of spun that, so if you were to look at the original format of it, we're kind of jumping ahead a little bit to try and get the lake back up, and that's where the structure, the water structure is.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Mr. Mayor, I got one, of course, what's the status of the grant? I remember several months ago, the city applied for a grant for Gwynne Lake, at, at the same time we rejected the grant out to the airport. What's the status of that grant? What was the purpose of that grant?
The, the purpose of the grant was to restore Gwynne Lake. We were not chosen for that grant during the cycle, because that grant really wanted to promote employment, job creation, and there would not be any job creation with the restoration of the lake.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's important that the public should be informed that when the city council votes to apply for a grant, if you don't get the grant, then the public deserves to know that we didn't get the grant. I mean, it just only, you know, it's transparency, you know, and it's unfortunate, unfortunate that three other members on the city council are looking like me, but I'm still asking for transparency, I would remind the city council, I don't know who's coming for the city council, but nobody looking like me, and I still opt for the same council plan. Having said that, she made a good point, you didn't get that grant, the government did not provide for economic development and jobs. When you take the grant to the airport and provide the economic development and jobs, so to Mr. Collins' point, that was a loss, and this is a loss because we wasted time with this, Mayor, then what do you guys want to get in the first place?
Okay, I want to say, I think it was just an option. The next item is disinformation purposes involved, where I was in Kenan's camp, no department administration, that the council and councilwoman, Jeff Martin, let's say, that's how we made, you know, a party line, and talked about it, he kind of got there.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to send Mr. Rosenthal the contractor with you, so.
Sounds like you were just telling me about you were trying to, like, counsel.
Yes, so, the, the law firm is, is, oh, it's escaping now, Bruce Humphries out of Jacksonville, the law firm specializes in Birchfield, not Humphries is the name of the firm, it was actually founded by Bill Birchfield, who was from Mayo of all places, and he founded the firm in Jacksonville years ago, and built the firm up around specializing in eminent domain issues, and they are in the process of putting together an engagement letter for the city to engage them to expeditiously handle this. Mr. Kenan made an effort at initiating the eminent domain action during his tenure. The case was dismissed because it was, there were some deficiencies in the filing, because this is a very hyper-technical type of legal filing, as you can imagine, when you're taking somebody's property from them, you have to dot every i and cross every t, and so that was dismissed, and for, for that very reason, and because it's such a specialized area, it's our firm's recommendation that you get somebody that knows this area of the law, and we've worked with Birchfield and Humphries, and, and Mr. Humphries in particular, and other cities, and have found him to be extremely experienced, well-versed, and capable in this area, and once retained, should be able to, to get this taken care of pretty quickly.
That's all, Mark, I've done a lot of property law, and we haven't gotten involved, and it's very specialized, and I think, I just wanted an update.
That's it.
I do have a comment, Mayor.
Sure.
As we know, school will be closing next week, so we have our children out for the summer, and we want them to have a safe summer, and there are summer camps around, so what I'm hoping, and I'm asking that the council kind of allow this to simmer in your mind and minds and in your hearts, that we sponsor some youth to get them into summer camp. Most summer camps are age, I believe, six to 12, somewhere in that range, and then we kind of leave behind the 13 and 14-year-olds. So I'm asking that the count, that this council will vote to for about 25 within the under 12 age, and then at 13, 14 age, I want us to really think of a, really say a good number, and get these children out of the house, off the streets, and into organized summer camps, if you will do that, and it, it will hopefully be on the next agenda, because I believe summer camps start like two weeks after, after school. So let's just be mindful that this will get our young people out of the house and off of the streets. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Where, where would these programs be at, Richardson Community Center?
I did speak with Richardson, I spoke with a few, I did speak with Richardson, but as the young lady said when she came up earlier, and she's talking about collaborating with Richardson, and that's what we want, we want these 501/3s, and we want these, these leaders to, to, and teachers, and, and organize programs to come together and bring our youth together, you know, let, let's work together, and, and let's put their monies into them, they're, they're worth it.
Yes, I agree.
Yes. Real quick, on the continuing adventures of James getting to know the city and everybody that works here, this past Friday, I had the opportunity to meet with the executive director of utilities, Mr. Steve Brown, and I toured and got to know a little bit about our natural gas department, really interesting stuff there, anybody who, anybody who doesn't know how it works, I'd recommend taking a look at it, and it's a tremendous revenue source for the city, it's, it's really a great operation, they're running there, and I just wanted to take a moment, if I could, I got to meet a couple of staff, I didn't, Friday afternoon, everybody seemed to be a little busy, but I would like to take a moment, if I could, just to read out a few names and tell them we appreciate them. Obviously, Steve Brown, Jerome Carter, no relation that I'm aware of, Mike Deloche, DJ Friendly, Diane Hunt, Chris Jackson, Daniel Jacobs, Darius Kimball, Ronnie Little, Jacquez Reddick, Keith Richardson, Mike Scipio, Joe Sheldon, and Darrell Singletary, that's our, that's our staff for, for our natural gas department here in the city, and they run, they run a very interesting department there, got to learn a lot about ways that Mr. Brown has been able to save us some money over the years, and, and, and he shows a lot of stuff, very forward-thinking kind of things we, we want to encourage, brought, brought a lot of stuff that we used to, we used to hire out for in-house, so that's very cool, and I just want them to know, we appreciate them, and then I also just like to say again, Memorial Day weekend, I hope everybody is safe and careful. My question goes to the city attorney. First, first of all, I was in the building the other day, when y'all doing the agenda meeting. Mr. Martin, the city is paying you to be our attorney. Why were you not here in our meeting instead of me, I guess you was in your office?
I was in my office attending by zoom.
Okay, well, we are paying you, that's my first issue. Second issue, when are you going to defend this council? Mr. Jernigan, Ms. Sykes have been attacked, and they had to go out and get their own legal representation, and they're doing a job for the city, but they got to go get their own attorney, what, what's, what's your job? Tip me with that.
Okay, so, and the, the two situations are distinct. In the Sykes case, an individual filed a complaint with the State Ethics Commission alleging that she breached the state ethics laws. Under state law, she is entitled to reimbursement for her defense, she does not necessarily, and there are actually reasons why she might not want us to defend her individually, because it would be a defense of her individually, but state law says she is entitled to reimbursement for the expenses of her defense when she is the subject of allegations that arise within the scope of her official duties. In that case, she was acting as city clerk in the actions that she took doing official duties, and the allegations were made. They were subsequently, the Ethics Commission chose not to pursue them, and no defense was necessary in her case, although our office did intervene and did facilitate a phone call with the investigator of the State Ethics Commission to determine some procedural matters in it. It never reached a stage where there was representation necessary, because it never went to a hearing. In Mr. Jernigan's case, Mr. Jernigan has filed a petition for an injunction based on allegations of stalking against Mr. Warren. The issues in that case are less clear. I spent significant time, actually, the end of last week, and over the weekend, and significant time today, with our entire city attorney team discussing the matter. Under these circumstances, there is only one case in Florida law that we can put our hands on among multiple cases dealing with this type of issue. There is only one case in Florida law that we can put our hands on where the courts have said, under those circumstances, where a sitting council person who has initiated the legal proceeding and filed for the petition for injunction was entitled to reimbursement for their fees, and under those circumstances, the reason was because it was part of a recall petition that had been filed by a group, I think it was in Fort Walton Beach, because the city council member, or members, it was three, who were the subject of the because the city council member, or members, it was three, who were the subject of the recall, uh, were the subject of that recall in their official capacities, and it was an attack upon their, uh, official capacity as a member of that city commission, uh, the, uh, they filed for an injunction to halt the recall effort, and the court found that even though they were the ones who filed for the petition, and they were the petitioners in the legal action, they were actually defending against another action, which was the legal recall process. So in that case, effectively, they were defending as well, uh, a legal matter that occurred within the scope of their official duties, where they were acting as a member of their governing body, uh, in that role, and that is the only case we can put our hands on where the court, uh, the courts have said, uh, that there was a, a right to reimbursement for legal fees, so, so that is the, that deals with the issue of the right to reimbursement under the state legal standard that exists, that has been articulated by the courts, it's a right to reimbursement for fees, not a right for the, the council to pay them proactively on the front end, because the condition to get reimbursed is success on the merits for whatever the claim is that you brought. So you've got that issue. Uh, on our side of things, uh, because we represent the city as an entity, we take our direction from the council, but we don't represent the council directly, we represent the city as an entity, just many, in much the same way, a corporate counselor represents the corporation and the shareholders and the, uh, the board of directors, they, they have to look at all of that in, in their representation. We represent the city as an entity, uh, we listen to the board for guidance and, and what the, uh, what the, uh, you know, direction of the city is, uh, but because we represent the city as an entity, it does not necessarily mean that the city's interests as an entity and those of an individual council member, particularly when the council member is not being legally or attacked through legal process, uh, in their official role as a council member, it creates the potential for conflict, because we have to balance the interests of the city as an entity against the interests of, uh, the individual council member that we're representing, and there is the potential that those interests may not align with each other. Um, there's also, as a practical matter, uh, because in this circumstance, it, it really is unclear whether the city could reimburse, uh, Mr. Jernigan for his fees because of the particular posture of the, the matter, uh, that has, uh, that is the subject of his petition, it's unclear whether, and, and I know that, uh, you know, everybody sitting here would say that, uh, under the circumstances, uh, that occurred, as, as I understand them, I'm not the most familiar with them, but, uh, as I understand them, uh, they occurred because of things that he had done that made an individual unhappy in his role as a member of the council, and, uh, but, does that arise, and, and, and I can go through case law, and like I say, I, I got it on my iPad here, but, uh, it, it's uncertain whether that arises to a level that would constitute official action and, and taking action in an official capacity on Mr. Jernigan's part to support, uh, the, the, the flow that would lead to an obligation of this council to reimburse him for his fees, so if we stepped out to represent him, he, we would have to sign a contract with him for legal services individually. He would be legal, legally obligated to us, to pay us, because the city couldn't do it unless he was successful on the merits in his petition in front of a judge, and if he was successful, then it would put us in the awkward position of applying to the city council for reimbursement, but then having to sit here and tell you, but we're not certain you can re, you can, we can advise you to reimburse us, because we're not sure there's a legal basis for it, and we're the ones submitting the bill for reimbursement. So it, it creates a legal quandary there for us, in, in these particular circumstances, which are different from the ones, uh, that, uh, Ms. Sykes faced, where she was definitely within the scope of her, uh, role and office and employment, and, uh, and we never did even actually step in to represent her, but, but would have, and she would have had a claim against the city. Uh, that's very clear, I mean, there's, there's numerous circumstances, and attorney general opinions, and Kate, and, uh, legal opinions from, uh, judges that state she would have been entitled to it, uh, and, uh, you know, if, if the city chose not to, then, uh, she would have a claim against the city and it would still go to court. And to be honest, I, I think out of our conversations today at our office, we're, we're kind of questioning the wisdom of even doing that, again, knowing that a city commission or city council could take a position that is adverse to our client and reimbursing them for their fees, and puts us, again, in the awkward position of having to advise the council a, as to one thing, and at the same time, be making a request for reimbursement on the person, on behalf of the person we represented, on the other hand. So that, that is, there, there are a lot of moving parts to it, from entitlement to reimbursement, to whether, uh, it, it meets the, uh, the, uh, requirements to, to be reimbursed, uh, to, um, the, the conflict that flows from that in our role as the, the city's legal counsel versus our obligations to an individual, uh, that, uh, that we may have as well. So we, we have not taken this lightly, we have spent a lot of time trying to analyze it, that is the result of our analysis, uh, and, uh, and that, that's, that's where we are.
So in other words, each individual need their own attorney?
If an individual, uh, is accused, uh, of something in their official capacity, we would always advise them to seek council's advice, uh, seek independent counsel, and if it meets the criteria, they would be, the council would be required to reimburse them. It's not even an option, if it meets the criteria, uh, the council would be required to reimburse them, but it has to meet the criteria of them doing it, that there can be no inkling of any personal gain whatsoever in the actions that they took, and it has to be completely within the scope of their office or official duties. And they, and generally, they have to be defending against something, they, they can't be someone who initiated the legal action, and they have to be defending against an action that somebody brought to them when they were acting in their official capacity.